Good evening. Ms. Haliff, you would open us with prayer, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, for this day, we truly give you thanks. We give you thanks for a reasonable portion of health and strength. And those, Lord, who in the sound of my voice this evening, Lord, we ask that you put your loving arms of protection around those students this evening, Lord, that are being honored and the schools that are also be in honor. We ask, Lord, that you continue to empower the village, Lord, to take care of our children. Heavenly Father, we kept this evening for those who may be homeless. We ask you, you put a roof over their heads. For those who may be, have food on the table, Lord, we ask that you feed them. Heavenly Father, we know that you can speak peace and there will be peace in this land. Heavenly Father, this evening, we ask that you come to this meeting, Lord, and put your loving arms of protection around us and help us, Lord, to ever keep our mission in front of us. That is to educate all the students here in Kershaw County to the best of our abilities. And this evening, Lord, we will give you all honor and glory because truly you are worthy to be praised. All these blessings we ask in your holy and precious name and we count it all done. Amen.
Call Kershaw County School Board of Trustees meeting to order for September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agenda? Properly motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Ms. Furnace. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda approving the minutes for September the third board meeting? Properly motion by Mr. Iris, second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that's unanimous. Want to thank each and every one for coming out this evening. I want to thank Joe Johnson with WPUB Radio and all of our students that are gathered here this evening that are doing such an outstanding job. At this time, Dr. Goodwin, student recognition.
We will start our recognitions tonight by recognizing several outstanding students. Please come forward when I call your name and remain up front so we can take a group photo. First, we'll recognize students who have earned the maximum score on standardized tests from this past spring. We had thirteen students to achieve this tremendous accomplishment. SC Ready is the statewide assessment that includes tests in English, Language Arts, and Mathematics. SC Ready is administered to all students in grades three through eight. Items on SC Ready are aligned to the South Carolina College and Career Ready standards. As I call your name, please come up front to receive your certificate and stay up front for a group photo with others. All of our honorees tonight are being recognized for earning the maximum score on the mathematics portion of SC Ready. From Blaney Elementary School, we recognize Dante Kim. Next, we'll recognize Robert Gusterson and Madison Hall from Camden Middle. Please come forward. Dobie's Mill Elementary also had two students to earn the maximum score. Will Bella Galucci and Grace Lee, please come up front. Okay, we have a late arrival. From Blaney Elementary, we recognize Dante Kim. Our next students are from Lugoff Elementary School. Will Emma McGary and Adeline Pelletier, please come forward. Next, we'll recognize Lugoff Elgin High freshmen Emily Glover and Lauren Walters, who earned the maximum score in math when they attended Stover Middle. Lugoff Middle's sixth grader Audrey Anna Harvley earned the maximum mathematics score when she attended Waterbury Elementary last year. Next, we recognize Pine Tree Hills Colton Joyner for his maximum score. Our final honorees for SC Ready tonight are Jason Bakamo and Asher Bills from Waterbury Elementary. Moms, grandparents, dads, please take pictures. Please join me in congratulating all of these students. This is a wonderful accomplishment. Next, we have several students from each of our high schools who will receive awards from the College Board National Recognition Program. These students earn this recognition because of their academic performance on the PSAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, or their AP exams. Students must meet these criteria in order to qualify: have a GPA of three point five or higher, a PSAT or National Merit Qualifying Test assessment score that are within the top ten percent of test takers in each state for the award program, or earn a score of three or higher than two, um, excuse me, earn a score of three or higher on two or more AP exams, attend a school in a rural or small town, or identify as African American, Hispanic, Latino, or Indigenous or Native American Indian. All of these students were recognized tonight for having accomplished these milestones during a demanding time in their high school career. Please come forward when I call your name by school and stay up front so we can take a picture. From Camden High School, will Cadence Tinker, please come forward. The College Board Recognition Program's awards students in several categories. Tonight, Cadence is being recognized for the First Generation College Student Award. Please join me in congratulating Cadence. Next, will Lugoff Elgin High School students Jordan Best, Jada Diaz, Dylan DeBose, Isabella Scott, and Colin Sellers, please come forward. Jordan, Dylan, and Isabella are receiving the First Generation College Student Recognition. Dylan and Colin are being recognized for receiving the National Rural and Small Town Award. Jada received the National African American Recognition Award. Please join me in congratulating these LE High students. Will Caleb Buffard, Alan Cubberly, Cooper Quigley, Jonathan Slade, and Timothy Smith from North Central High School, please come forward. Caleb received the National African American Recognition Award. Alan, Cooper, Jonathan, and Timothy all received the National Rural and Small Town Recognition. Join me in congratulating all these students for their hard work. Our final student recognition tonight, we welcome up front Willard Technology Center student Kylie Tucker. Kylie is the WTC Kershaw Future Farmers of America Chapter President. She was a member of the state-winning Veterinary Science CDE team and then earned a Silver Individual Placement at the national level for veterinary science. Kylie is a member of the second-place State Horse Evaluation Competition Team last year. Next month, Kylie will be onstage and in the spotlight during the 2024 National FFA Convention and Expo in Indianapolis, performing in the National FFA Talent Competition. Kylie will perform onstage during the convention and expo. She submitted an application along with a recorded audition. During the convention and expo, all acts will have a chance to compete in three rounds and be judged on preparation, delivery, engagement, entertainment value, and technical ability. The winner will receive a monetary prize. Congratulations, Kylie, for being chosen for this national honor. We wish you the best. Our final recognition tonight is a school award that goes to Lugoff Elementary School. Will Principal Melissa Lloyd and Lugoff Elementary Nurse Anna Deal, please come forward. We would also like to ask members of the Lugoff Elementary School Wellness Team to come up front. They include Jennifer Bonds, Erin Teague, Edward Rickwood, Katie Hancock, and Jessica Giger. Also joining us tonight is Taylor Herlick from the Alliance for Healthier Generation. Lugoff Elementary has been recognized again this year as one of America's healthiest schools by Healthier Generation for their commitment to supporting staff, student, and family well-being. This year, they won awards in the following four categories: supporting school health services, implementing local school wellness policy, bolstering physical education and activity, and cultivating staff well-being. Please join me in congratulating the Lugoff Elementary School team. As we move to the regular part of our agenda, parents and students, you're welcome to stay or you can leave at this time. You're missing all the fun.
Our...
Our... Our next agenda item is public forum. We have one individual to sign up. Krishana Torres, Moms for Liberty. We have five minutes speaking time, and it's a time where the board will listen and receive input.
Good evening. Again, my name is Krishana Torres. I'm the Vice Chair of the Kershaw County Moms for Liberty Chapter. And on behalf of the Moms for Liberty Chapter, we would, and the 917 Society, we would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to each of the board members for your unwavering support during this year's Constitution Day. Your dedication and collaboration were instrumental in the successful distribution of over 900 constitutions to several schools, including the Camden Military Academy, the Montessori School, and Cornerstone Christian. Now, this remarkable achievement, of course, would not have been possible without your commitment to fostering a deeper understanding of our nation's founding principles among the students. The enthusiasm and cooperation from not just yourselves, but in particular, I'd like to take a moment because I know that people often come to complain, but I'd like to take a moment and thank publicly Becky Bean for all of her support through this process. Additionally, we would also like to inform you that PragerU, I don't know how many of you are familiar with PragerU? Anyone? I know you can't answer. So, um, PragerU is joined by our very own South Carolina Superintendent of Education, Ellen Weaver, in discussing the alignment of PragerU with South Carolina state standards. So, what does that mean? That means that educators across South Carolina can now access PragerU's kids' supplemental educational resources through the state's official learning portal, which offers teachers and students engaging resources that celebrate America's rich history. I'm happy to, again, I know you can't answer right now, I'm happy to forward the, all of that message traffic to each one of the board members so that you can review it and read it for yourself and see the state curriculum. And again, I want to thank you for all of your support for Constitution Day. Happy Constitution Day to each one of you, and I brought you a copy just in case you didn't already have one.
Thank you, thank you. Our next agenda, our next agenda item is old business, new business, board policy review. Mr. Matthews.
Dr. Goodwin, Dr. Smith, members of the board. Tonight, we're bringing you several policies with recommendation for revision. All the policies that we are bringing to you tonight are being updated in response to the new State Board of Education Regulation 43.170, which is the Uniform Procedure for Selection or Reconsideration of Instructional Materials. This new regulation establishes consistent definitions and a two-pronged threshold test for local educators and boards to determine if materials available to students in public schools are age and developmentally appropriate and educationally suitable and aligned with the purpose of South Carolina's instructional program. The revisions presented come at the recommendation of the School Boards Association through their Policy and Legislative Update Manual, and will ensure that our policies align with the new state regulation. We have also sent these policies to our attorneys for their review. Our district has already taken the appropriate and required steps of providing a complete and current catalog of all books and other materials available to students through any of our district's school libraries online through a link on our district and school webpages. We have also posted the state's South Carolina Instructional Materials Uniform Parent Complaint Form on our school and district webpages as required. As always, we encourage parents to be actively engaged in their child's education. Parental involvement in a child's reading life is crucial as it fosters a love for reading, supports literacy development, and strengthens the child-parent bond through shared literacy, literary experiences. Our librarians, teachers, and administrators strive to work collaboratively with our parents to address any concerns about the material their child is reading. In your folder, you have a document that will be used by district staff as a guide and a timeline to follow if we have, if we receive any concerns regarding instructional materials. We're bringing you these recommended changes tonight as information. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Not necessarily a question, Mr. Matthews, but a comment. First of all, as a former principal, as most know here, I want, Dr. Goodwin hopefully has ensured that our principals and you as well as CAO that every school does have a viable review team in place, and they know who they are, and they know what the process is and what constitutes a proper review of a challenge, per se. I know that I had the opportunity to incur that a few times as a principal, and it quelled because they were so astute with regard to the process, the team that I had in place, not my credit, but theirs. It quelled any concerns and was able to put to rest the, uh, the challenge before it was even moved any further down the chain on these steps. Secondly, I've done it before as a board member and as a principal, just a huge shout out to our school media specialists who do, in my opinion, an exemplary job already. I know that they're human, and sometimes things can slip through, but in my experience working in seven different schools over my career and attending two more, so that's two-thirds of the school in our district, or half at least, I can say with the surety that we do have an extremely competent staff in our media centers right now, and I'd just like to give them an open shout out to keep doing what they're doing and stay vigilant. We're in some times now where we're probably going to get some challenges, and they're validated on occasion, and sometimes they're not. But I know that they're, they're on it, and they conduct their proper reviews, and I know Ms. Putt can give some oversight to that as well, and appreciate her efforts as well.
Mr. Chairman. Matthews, just, just on the policy IJ revision at the very bottom, is that notice about keeping a complete catalog of every material that's offered in the library, is that already on our site, or is that something that we're going to have to add and keep up with?
It says-
Already been doing that, okay. That just seems like a lot of-
For our libraries, that is already on our website.
Any other questions for Mr. Matthews?
But, yeah, sorry, the question is, I apologize, Mr. Matthews, is that mean that it has to be on the district's website or each school's website?
It's on the district and school's website.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Next item, Kershaw County First Step Board.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Kershaw County First Steps is an early childhood initiative that is statewide. Kershaw County obviously is our branch of that. We have one appointee to that, and we would recommend that Ms. Ginger Cato continue serving on that board. Our minutes need to reflect that, though, that y'all have been informed that that's who we're asking to represent us. So, if, Wendy, did they need a vote or just they needed a vote? Okay, so if y'all could vote to appoint her to the First Steps Board, I would appreciate it.
Problem motion by Dr. King, second by Mr. Roberts, and a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by a sentai. Chairman's report, you have it before you, which is the Legislative Advocacy Conference and the date of it. If you would like to attend, please let Wendy know. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, I just have one thing under Superintendent and Leadership Team Report, and that would be tonight, we gave you those six policies related to the instructional materials, but in October, we will be bringing you the information on the cellphone regulation that we also have to come in compliance with. There's very little input we get into to how that policy looks, but we do have a committee that's involving the high school principals, middle school principals, elementary representatives, and teacher representatives that will make sure that all of the pieces that we do have input are ones that we can live with and we can make work within school. So, we'll be bringing you that. Then we'll use the month of November and December to make sure that students and their families understand what the, what the ask is on that. So, I just wanted to be sure that you knew that was coming down the line.
Thank you, Dr. Goodwin. Just want to remind the board, if you are planning on attending the delegate assembly, Wendy would need to know tomorrow, which is September 18th. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss resignation and retirement of certified and classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel, assignment changes and transfer of certified and classified personnel? Properly motion by Mr. Coach Blackman, second by Mr. Reeves. All those in favor, let it be known by a sentai. Those opposed, and it's done.